What are you being punished for, Bill?
Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, March 27th at 5:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board, which I would like to call to order. Any requests, roll call, please?
Fawley?
Here.
Hudrow?
Here.
Brenner?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Grineer? And State?
Here, thank you. Item three is a public forum on the Jefferson Street parking lot construction and Jefferson Crossing project. I'm going to ask Jeff Rower, Director of Public Works, to give some ideas on what's going to happen, and then we will open it for discussion.
You got it.
Jeff, they used that last, yesterday at the candidate forum. And I know it ran out of battery there.
Let's just use this one.
I expected a little speed.
All right, are we good? That right there is excellent. All right, well, we wanted to have this public forum mostly because I'm sure you've been following in the news, the progression of the Jefferson Crossing project, going through some final approvals at the village level and also working with, you've been seeing some of the buildings being cleared back there, some of the things being taken down. And we know that this is actually, it's a very exciting project for the downtown. It's going to actually completely change the character, I believe, of a portion of the downtown. And so we just want to make sure that, obviously knowing the sensitivity of the parking lot back there and parking in the downtown, we really want to talk about kind of how things are going to progress in the next couple of weeks and months and through the next year as this is built. And then just kind of looking off into the future, you know, be able to help answer any questions that you may have. Obviously, what's going on right now is the demolition and the removal of the buildings and the houses. As I understand it, they've actually started to take apart the auto repair place in the back as well as some of those storage units or storage buildings back there. But the main demolition of the homes is actually scheduled for about a week to two weeks? Is that about right? Okay, from the contractors here. So, week to two weeks pending final approval from DNR and the abatement and anything that needs to be done. So we're going to be able to see those start to clear out. I believe one tenant's leaving May 1st, is that right? Or April?
The last time it's moving out this week.
Okay, this week. So it'll be totally clear and for the buildings to start coming down. You may have noticed also that we had Public Works come in and remove the fencing this last week to save, we wanted to salvage the fencing. It was still in fairly new and in good condition, as well as remove the fencing and posts from around the dumpster corral. And so, as a result, also knowing that what's going to be happening over here, we've had them temporarily move the dumpsters to a different location and likely, we can talk about that a little bit tonight, but likely that position may change at times. We'll have to kind of see how construction progresses. But let me talk a little bit about the site, and please correct me, Brian, right, Brian, if I get off or if I say something incorrectly, but we, what we have back here is kind of a shared use of the parking lot. And as you'll see, kind of, I'm going to actually sketch my hand along the line of what the public parking lot is. And that's starting up here, comes down here, goes over, down, and kind of does a seesaw pattern across the back or across through the parking lot. Early on in the process, when discussions with the developer, they came to us and said, you know, listen, there's a way that we can think can make this work better for all parties, kind of even out some of this as well as kind of make it just a better fit for the property. And so, we've worked with them to come up with a new property line that'll be along here. Straightens it out much, much better, aligns with the design of the parking lot, aligns with the parking they need, and actually ends up with a net gain of about 3,000 square feet to the village. So, they're giving us about 6,000 feet, square feet of what was their property, and we're giving them about 3,000 feet of what was our property in exchange. The preliminary plans for the parking lot configuration, you kind of see here, obviously we're going with a single entrance into the parking lot. And that single entrance actually is part of the discussion that we've had with them is we've required them to have that into a three, kind of a three-bay entrance with two, a right-in, right-out, or left-out, right-out, and a single lane in. And that allows kind of to get rid of the two entrances and a lot of confusion in that area. We have handicap parking spaces up here near the sidewalk and kind of the access to the main downtown area there. You can see we actually have a dual flow through the parking lot, either down and around and out, or over and around and out. And that actually accomplishes a couple of things that should help with the delivery vehicles because we're still going to maintain the loading zone back here for the businesses. Parking lot will actually have new lighting. We'll have, obviously, all-new landscaping and be completely reconfigured. We're actually showing the dumpster location to be moved over here at the request, obviously of some of the business owners. We want to be sensitive to that as we've tried to move this as far as we can to the west. But we also want to be able to keep, we actually maybe even be moving it farther to the west for if there were ever a connection through to here, we want to be able to line up with that location. So what we'll probably be seeing is this move a few spaces over to the, to the left. One of the things we want to talk about is the position of the utility lines. And as you are all aware, this area has overhead utility lines along Jefferson Street, as well as overhead utility lines kind of running along the back and overhead services to all the buildings along South Main there. One of the things that came out during the approval process, one of the directions from the village board was that we really want to see those lines go underground. They're unsightly. We have some poles kind of right in the way of, right in the middle of a few parking spaces. And, you know, it gets very close to the front of this building. There's, you know, it's set back enough, but it's just if you have a three-story building and you're looking right out on power lines, even the developers agreed that that was something that, you know, they thought is value. So we've been working with Lion Energy in a proposal to underground the lines, starting just beyond the railroad tracks, just east of the railroad tracks. Underground them all the way to here, and then underground from where it is at the pole back just onto Ziggy's parcel there. And then it'll be underground from there and underground under the street to the first pole on the north side there. And what that will mean is that there will have to be a new transformer and metering box set somewhere back in this area of the parking lot. And that transformer metering box then will have, that's where Alliance will run their power to. Then we will have a private contractor come in and do underground services to the, to the building metering locations. Common question is, is does that come at a cost? To me, you're already served with electricity, so, you know, just by coming in and making this change of configuration, that is something that the village is paying for. The, the only impact you would have would be obviously at a time when there has to be a transition from the overhead power to the underground power. And that, you know, the impact, we're going to limit that to as very limit, very little as possible, ideally just a few hours per business, to be able to coordinate that. And when we get to that point, our vision is that we'll work with you. I know some businesses are closed on Monday, so it actually, that's a good time, obviously, to do the switch-over. And we can kind of work with the different businesses to see, you know, when, when would be hopefully the least amount of impact.
Does that mean you'll upgrade the existing legacy 208 systems?
Define legacy 208 systems.
You have exhausted my question. I just found out we have...
You and me both.
We have legacy power that's different than what's standard. It's not 200 volt, it's 208 volt.
Oh, 208, okay.
And that's, I think, a number of buildings along there.
Okay.
And it hasn't been upgraded for years because nobody wants to take it. Is that, will that change as part of this?
It's a very good question. I'll have to, I'll let...
I remember the guy, the line, saying something about that, but I can't remember exactly what.
Yeah.
I think we'll, we can check with Alliance on that.
Yeah, I'll check with Alliance and get back with you on that. But the, the, the plan has not been to, that this would be, you know, pass on a significant cost to the building owners. Any other questions on utilities before, I mean, we can ask more as we finish up here. So then, what we, what we foresee here in the immediate future, and maybe Brian or the contractor would be able to come up and, and kind of show, but, you know, what, what will be happening, happening in the immediate future will be the installation of a construction fencing. That'll, that'll actually surround the entire parcel here. That'll also include shutting off the sidewalk. We're actually going to be closing the sidewalk from the railroad bridge all the way out to the point where the construction entrance, just beyond the construction entrance, will be. That sidewalk, we're anticipating, will be closed for approximately one year. And that's just, now that's probably the longest time period, but there is, there's a sidewalk on the north side of Jefferson all along there. There's a crosswalk right over here and then a crosswalk downtown. And we think that people will kind of, obviously, the first couple of weeks, probably have a little adjustment, but people will kind of get used to that new pattern, which is very typical when we're talking about such a significant reconstruction of an area. We will, our plan is to be able to give you construction updates and kind of notices as things move along. The last thing we want, you as business owners and operators and tenants, is to be in the dark or feel like you're in the dark with what's going on. We want to be able to have a kind of an open communication that if there's something you're concerned with, or if there's an upcoming need that maybe we not, we may not have viewed or addressed, that at least is put up on our schedule, that we can kind of work with the developers on, on how that will be dealt with. That being said, this is a major reconstruction. It's the second reconstruction of the parking lot in, in seven years, five, seven years. And, you know, there's nothing we can do here that will not prevent some sort of disruption. And that's just the nature of the beast. It's like, every time we go and rebuild a roadway, we tell the residents, it will get torn up, it will be muddy, it will be disruptive, and it will be difficult at times to get to your house. However, keep the end game in mind of the, the nice finished parking lot we'll have, the extra residents will be bringing into the wonderful upgrade that this is to the downtown area. And so I think we want to try to keep that in as much as possible in our minds as we move forward. Think that's about it. Are there any questions as far as the site and how the developer plans to deal with this, how we will be involved from the village standpoint or anything?
I would ask if there are questions, to get the microphone, please, because people can't hear on TV, so.
Did we figure out the wireless?
Would you like our contractor to look at the timeframe of some of the infrastructure putting in as far as the fence hanging?
My name is Jerry Thiel. I'm wondering with the parking lot being downgraded as far as the parking is concerned, while the construction is taking place, has the village reached out to BMO or to UW Health for additional parking?
No, we have not, actually. There's, what we have been doing in the last several months, if we've been keeping track and counting the number of spaces even throughout the day that are available just outside here in this parking lot, as well as in hitching post, and, and we've found, with the exception of only during spring break sometimes, or times where the kids are out of school and down at the coffee shop, like right around Christmas time, have we ever felt that there's been not enough parking spaces downtown. So we have not actually talked to them yet about any kind of shared use.
All right. As far as handicap, I know Main Tap has a lot of elderly people coming in. And, you know, I see all the parking, or handicap parking is right along Jefferson Street. Is there any way that we can split that up? So, Main Tap has, and even Charlie's, has some space for the handicap. It's a long ways to, you know, go with a walker.
Main Tap's right down here, and then Charlie's is right about here. There are also accessible spaces out on Main Street, both, on both sides of the, the Main Street there, you know, on the Main Street and that little side street, we call it over there, there's some accessible spaces over there. We can always look at, we can always ask the developers to look at possibly moving an accessible space back here. The nice thing is when, when you, when you have spaces like that, it's nice when you can group them because not only are they wider, but then sometimes you can have shared bays, and that, that way they work as van spaces as well for handicap spaces.
I think that's a consideration, just for Main Tap. And then your request? Nine transformers into one utility box on the south side of the development? Is that correct?
That is the plan, yes. Yeah.
So there's not going to be any further boxes on the north side?
What do you mean, on the north side?
Up by the handicap park.
Right.
So all nine transformers will be split up?
Well, we'll, we'll, I think we'll only have one, one main transformer down here, and then we have separate services that'll be run. I believe they're, they're actually run and then split once they get to the building, I believe, to the meter boxes.
I think, I think the, the electrical that's run under the parking lot has to resurface that into the hole. There might be a small...
But that's going to be on the north side of, north side of the, oh, yeah.
It seems like a lot of energy being dispersed onto one side of the parking lot.
Yeah, I'm not an electrical engineer or an electrician, so, but, but no, we've been working with Matt Weir with Lion Energy, who's been working with the design on all of this.
The other question I have, what kind of screening is going to be between Ziggy's and the development?
Along, along the, the south side of here?
Yes.
We have that landscape plan with us. It's, it's probably just a, I don't know, do you know, Brian?
Is there going to be a fence or is it...
Is there no fence? I don't have a concrete, I have some landscape plan on me.
You're saying the current fence will, will stay up for now, the chain link fencing?
Are you talking during construction or after?
After.
So from the apartment? Yeah, I don't think there's...
I can answer your electrical a little bit better. Transformers sitting down here are huge. I mean, they're probably six feet across. So the majority of transformers are set here on the south end, and then there's one here for the apartment building. The one, if there is one here, is a smaller, just to protect the wires coming out of the ground to go up. So it's not really a transformer, it's just a box. But the, the transformers are freestanding down here to take all the power from here. They have to route it from here. They actually have to loop the site, so it's all the way around. But it'll come here and it'll, it'll come off of here for the businesses.
So they're going to, going onto the business property, they're going to have to cut that or go underground and then up to the meters?
Right. My guess is they'll upgrade the meters. I, I'm not sure, but normally they do. But, yeah, they'll come from here and they'll bring them in and mount them, whether they're two on a building or not, I don't know. They might duel them right next to each other on the partition of the, between the walls in each building.
Does that mean there'll be fewer parking spots there because the transformer will be taking up...
Well, they, we don't know, we don't know the full configuration back there yet with Alliance and how much area that's going to be.
Because it's a six-foot box, it'd probably be a...
I don't know if they're stacking them. They'll have to either be behind or on the side, they can't be in front. So there'll be one main box for the businesses. And then while I'm up here, quickly, I'll give you a heads-up on how we're going to do the construction. There's a fence that runs the length of Jefferson with a screening on it. And there'll be a, a fence that comes down, leaves all the parking on the, right now the way they have it with two driveways. All those will remain open. We're going to use enough space to get a semi in and out. They'll back in and out. And from eight to one, that's when that'll happen. We take no deliveries after one. We have a flag guy there the whole time at a gate. So it's a gated site. We, we, we need to, to use the majority of the driveway west, the second one, from the businesses, to be able to sweep a semi in there. But once we get in, we'll probably leave most of these in this area open for parking. We'll change, as soon as we figure it out, we'll move the fence over so you have additional parking.
If you do that, is a semi going to be able to navigate that turn to get up there?
I, I'm not sure about a semi. I, I wouldn't know.
We, he had, I believe we had their designers look at it with the evaluation, I mean, not, you know, your standard delivery semis, I would call it, you know, not a double trailer, you know, crazy kind of semi type of thing, but...
I'm just thinking about the beer trucks mainly.
Beer trucks should be able to get in and out. Yeah, they'll be fine. But like, A1 moving in a semi, probably not. That's why we're planning on just bringing them straight in and out. Some of them, we may unload right on the street down here.
Yeah, well, I'd like, yeah, I'd like that part designed because that way if someone does have to come in, it can at least get off the roof.
Right.
Is it fair to say that during construction, the public parking will continue to be available for public parking, except when the parking lot itself is being redone?
That's correct. We're going to try to leave as many spaces as we can. The problem is some of our trucks are huge for roof trusses and, and material. And, and so, but, but there, there should be plenty of stalls during construction. We'll have it separated, and we'll kind of move our fence. And a lot of times at night, we might be able to move it closer to our building to open up more stalls. It'll be a five-foot fence, be flexible, and hopefully, you know, we can move it back and forth depending on what, what we're doing that day.
Is there any chance we can reach out to UW and BMO for additional parking while that?
I was going to address that. Brett had talked to them a couple of months back, more on a permanent level to see, you know, when they were looking at their parking lot. They were not very open to it from a liability standpoint. From a temporary standpoint, Brett has good contact there. I could have him reach out this week and see if there's, if there's a way they could help the community, I guess, with dealing with assets that would be maybe a long-term answer, but we do have a contact there. We can, we can make an effort on that and see what kind of response we can get.
At least in the evenings.
Yeah. You know, they're such a large company, they just, their answers...
I know.
No. Yeah. We don't, we don't want to take on it, but I think if we look at it from a construction standpoint and maybe address more on a temporary situation, maybe...
I think maybe between you and, you know, the village contact, UW and BMO, that maybe they'll become a little bit better neighbor and provide additional parking permanently.
We will make our efforts.
Now, the, when, at what stage are you going to be putting this electrical down underground?
Well, for, for the building itself, once we get the foundation in and we get the precast set, there's about a 10-day period where Alliance says they're going to come in, set a transformer here, route it around to here, and then they'll put the underground in, right along here, about where the sidewalk is, and come down and put that in. Now, I don't think we have a date on the parking lot because so many things have to be coordinated. We have to, you know, it's up, kind of up to the city. I mean, we're shooting for a July opening of, of 19, of 18, right? No, 17, 18. And so, it's, it's kind of a, you know, getting the businesses lined up is probably the big thing. Also, there's a purification system that gets buried in this parking lot that the water has to go through.
Stormwater.
Stormwater system, so before it runs into the storm.
So it's probably not going to be until 2017.
I, at the earliest, I would say it'd be late 2017 or early 2018. It'd be my guess.
So you're going to 18, then you, you know, it's after May 15th because that's when they open winter. So the asphalt guys will wait for the silos to open about May 15th. So we're leaving the parking lot in, by the way. We're going to leave this existing parking lot in as long as we can to keep the mud off the street. We're also going to have a sweeper on site. So, and if any of the businesses or anybody has an issue, they can go right to my gate guy, he's my foreman, and he will call me right away. I'm here in the afternoons, he's in the, in the mornings running the gate. So there's one of us going to be there pretty much all the time. So you'd be able to walk right over there if there's an issue.
So there's, currently there's alternate...
Currently, there's alternate side parking rules in effect for that lot rotating with the lot behind the South Main businesses? April 15th, November, what, November 15th, April 15th, I believe? Will, will those rules be suspended during construction when there's fewer spots? I'm more, I'm more thinking about this lot, so if somebody can't find a spot in that lot, and it's an odd or even day, they can park in this lot for two days in a row for the tenants of the buildings on South Main there. I, I have no idea who that's directed to.
Well, it's not something that we've actually discussed, although it's something that we can discuss. I think, you know, as we see this, as we see the process go, you know, we think, we think actually there, you know, between the number of spaces that will still be available back here and the number of spaces that are available in the village lot across the street, you know, we should be able to maintain that okay. But I think if we're, if we start running into a problem with that, then, you know, we can definitely discuss that with the police and, and, you know, the only, the only caveat to that is if in a snow emergency, and, you know, even in villages and cities when you have a snow emergency, all those rules kind of go away and everyone has to get off the street anyways to allow the, the plowing of the lots and everything.
Now, will there be any signage put up directing people through alternate parking like people stop?
Well, there's, I know there's signs actually on the back of Holsteins that say additional parking across the street, and I think it's, I mean, honestly, it's not too far. I mean, I, I don't know if anyone's ever, you know, to me expressed, you know, where can we park because it's, you know, it's, it's a pretty tight downtown area.
That's what would help, too, we could open up the fence between Ziggy's and allow... We could open up the fence between Ziggy's and allow through traffic to UW if there is permission. Maybe the village would like to indemnify UW for parking.
Just a quick, I'll be right here.
I just saw our attorney flinch when we said indemnify. Not too much. Right, yeah, I mean, there's really no, you know, we, we have reached, I know that the developers reached out during design and everything as far as, because one of the things we did ask them to do is look through, look for a connection through to UW Health, and at this time, that's, that has not been... And at this time, that's, that has not been, um, allowed or been on the table with them. Uh, but eventually, you know, we see this as probably kind of triggering. That's, we think finding the spot for the trash location is the most challenging part of this because, uh, it's trying to guess where, if, if there is a through connection in the future, where that may be. And, you know, we're looking at it saying, well, this is the most likely spot that would work well with the flow of traffic. But, uh, you know, when we built the trash enclosure four or five years ago, we did not build it with the idea in mind that we were gonna be moving it this year or removing it.
Are there other questions that people have at this time? Anyone who'd like to make comments? We'll hand the mic to them. Anything else? Brian, do you have comments you'd like to make?
No, I mean, again, I, I think we've all lived around construction in the past and, um, you know, I'm trying to get to know some of the neighbors I'm seeing out there when I'm out there. Um, again, I think having Mike's people there, if you have concerns, they'll convey them to us as fast as we can. We'll react as fast as we can. Um, it's not ideal. It's a very large building and, and, and there's gonna be some challenges. Mike's, uh, we'll have to work with the police at times. I'm, I'm sure we'll have, uh, at some time, you'll have to do a road closing, uh, when, when some of the larger trusses come in. Um, you know, apologies in advance. But again, I think the, the moral of the story here is that at the end, the results, uh, will be amazing for the downtown and hopefully it'll bring more business to the local businesses and all, all, uh, feel the benefit of that. Make sure the construction workers are taking, uh, work and, you know, eat at the restaurants when they're working. I've talked with Mike on the construction vehicles. He's found some, you know, even the amount of people working on the site when we place this department. Uh, Mike's been working on that, so we will not be taking those stalls that are needed for, uh, you know, the, the patrons of the businesses. So they're working.
But you, you know what else is gonna happen is we're gonna have sometimes 40 or 50 or 60 guys working on the building. The one good thing is they'll walk and eat lunch within walking distance. You know, they might eat supper within walking distance. They'll use the local businesses. Unfortunately, sometimes they'll take a spot you don't want them in. And we'll try to control that and try to get them to areas where they won't interfere with businesses as much. We were out looking for spots the other day and, you know, it's, it's tight downtown. So, uh, but we'll see what we can do about parking them along areas that don't interfere with the businesses.
I was just gonna say that one element of the development agreement requires that there be plans and specifications for the construction of the project and the parking area. And that part of that, part of those plans are required to address, uh, coordinating construction in a way that minimizes disruption of the, the parking lot. So I haven't seen that yet, but, but we're hearing about it tonight. So I, I'm expecting that'll be part of the, part of the approved plan that, um, that will be in place before construction begins.
As far as, uh, we're concerned, nobody will be parking in any of the stalls that are working there. Nobody will be parking on site here for most of the time while it's under construction. It'll only be for deliveries. We do not have, we barely will have enough room to get a truck in and out. So.
But, so you're looking for parking for people working?
Downtown, yeah.
Yeah. I think that, that should maybe be part of the plan, is where are people gonna park? I mean, just so that that's clear. Um, especially if you're gonna have 40 or 50 people.
They're not parking here.
Understood.
Okay.
But, but are they gonna be parking here across the street or is we, I think it's just a good idea to have a, have a plan for that parking.
Will this affect the ability to do construction up the front of the building at all?
Will it affect? I mean, I don't think so. I, 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 you know, um, I'm trying to figure out if that would. Doesn't sound like it would. I mean, most of the time, like with Tuck Pointing, I believe, uh, well, Jerry and Bunny, you guys just did this, this last year. And there were a few spaces that were down for a day or so as, as they got the lift equipment in to do it. But I don't, it never caused any significant disruption.
Further questions or comments? Any trustees have questions or comments?
I just make a couple of comments about when we rebuilt the downtown a few years ago. I think a key part of that working well, and we got a lot of feedback from businesses that it did. A lot of disruption, but that's what happens when you do this. The end result makes it worth it. What was good communication. And we certainly heard tonight that that's, uh, what the plan is, that there are people there on a, every day, uh, to whom you can communicate. So I think that'd be important to do that. Uh, if there are problems, then fix those right away. So, uh, and I'm sure the businesses will, will follow through on that to help make, make that work well. Anything else? Anyone? Staff? I think if you move a couple of blocks away from downtown, you'll find plenty of parking, be my guess. Go down this way and up, uh, South Main to Elmen and Washington, uh, there's a lot of parking on the street. Okay, anything else over here? Anyone? Okay. We will go to item four, police department items. Uh, we have, uh, I'll read through all these. And Lieutenant Paganoff can say, make it come if she would, would like to. We have an update on staffing, a K-9 report, school resource officer reports, summary of major crimes, and March investigations activity report. So Lieutenant?
Um, just wanted to point out that the K-9 report's gonna look significantly different, more detailed. We're actually using, uh, an app. It's a program we found. It's very minimal cost, but it does provide a lot of, uh, more accurate, detailed information. It starts out with training and then breaks down, um, each training, what type of drug was used during the training. And then, then it moves into just cases that our K-9 officer was deployed on, uh, whether it was Verona, Oregon, or any other jurisdiction. Uh, then there's notes. Uh, this will help with anytime he has to testify to the dog's credibility, or accuracy, as well as his own. So, very useful information.
Yeah, nicely done. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Yeah, that's fine. Are there any questions? It's our usual report. People watching, of course, can find these online if you'd like to. Uh, I know the board finds them very worthwhile. So, thank you. But item five, the village attorney and village administrators' report. Uh, item A, discussion possible action on ordinance number 17 dash 06, an ordinance to amend sections 1.31 sub 1 sub A relating to residency of park board, um, park board members. Village administrators note, uh, Mike is requesting that park board membership be similar to the historic preservation commission membership, whereby the majority of the park board members would be village residents. And the recommended motion is to waive the first reading of ordinance number 17 dash 06.
Some of. Second.
Thank you. Got that? Are there question or comments here, anything, staff?
So the, the way the ordinance is prepared right now, it's, it's not, it's not similar to HPC. So if, if the board is okay with my suggestion, then when we, when Matt and I bring it back for the second reading adoption, we'll put that in there. Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Mike, could you just explain briefly why you're doing this?
Well, I thought a little bit about, you know, making it Oregon School District. And I understand it'd be maybe over, over time, it could be easier to recruit people. But I think with the, um, major issues that the park board is gonna be dealing with, and, and I understand they have to make recommendations of the board. They don't make final decisions. I, I just think we should try to have the majority of the park board, um, village residents. That's my opinion. It's worked well on HPC.
No, I just wanted to clarify that for people watching at home.
Further questions or comments?
Well, just in support of, uh, Mike's decision, I got some feedback that I've gotten from people in the village. Because they felt that, um, that would be appropriate. So your idea is supported at least by the ones that have come forward to talk to me.
I mean, HPC's worked out great. For example, we get the benefit of Arlen Kai's great, you know, leadership and knowledge and everything, and he's not a village resident. But we still, at the end of the day, most of the people that are on the HPC are, are village residents. So I think it's a good mixture.
And the parks are used by many people that don't live in the village, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, spread the motion on the park board membership. Uh, so majority would be village residents. Uh, weigh the first reading of ordinance number 17 oh six. All in favor?
Aye.
Most, most curious. Thank you. Item B, discussion possible action, ordinance number 17 dash 07, an ordinance to amend section 2.14 relating to action on ordinances. Uh, recommended motion, weigh the first reading of ordinance number 17 dash 07.
Some more.
Second.
Thank you. Should be, comments here, Mike?
Matt, do you want to?
Yeah, I'm just, wanna make sure I get this right, because, yeah. Many 2.14. Yeah, so, uh, as you may recall, I recommended modifying the, this ordinance because, uh, it was unclear, um, whether or not, or, or the requirements associated with, uh, waiving the rules were a little unclear. With this change, um, uh, it's clear that a two-thirds vote is required to suspend the rules to, um, to allow the board to go ahead and do two full readings, or excuse me, to waive the, the two full readings at two meetings requirement. Yeah, it's of the full board. So you'd need two, it's now, it would be clear if this, if this, uh, is approved that, uh, waiving that partic- waiving the rules to adopt an ordinance at a single meeting would require a two-thirds vote of the full board.
Thanks, Matt. Questions? Okay, spread the motion second to approve, to waive the first reading of ordinance number 17 oh seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Most, most curious. Thank you. I had a C discussion possible action regarding Rukert Milkie, uh, general services agreement. The recommended motion is to, uh, approval of the master professional service agreement between Rukert Milkie and the village of Oregon.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah. Um, I'd invite, uh, Jason Letha here to share with Rukert Milkie tonight. And he can kind of give you just a little bit here, but, uh, this is a, kind of a standard, um, thing. Every once in a while, every couple of years, usually an engineering firm will want to kind of update their contract to the newest contract. Um, sometimes update their rates and everything. Um, you know, they've not updated their contract with us since 2011, which is, you know, five, six years, and that's about a standard, um, duration usually. They, uh, so they have a general services agreement. This is not like committing us to, uh, spend a certain amount of money or anything like this. It really just is a general services agreement. And then what, then, then when we ask them to do work, uh, they can bring before us a task order, um, much, uh, less effort to put that together and much more streamlined. Um, I would like to say that it, you know, with this, um, a- and this happens with every, uh, village engineer position is, as they, as you get older and as you get more experienced, your rate goes up. And, and villages will notice that. But, uh, one of the things that, uh, Rukert Milkie has done is they've, they've been able to give us kind of a, a negotiated lower rate for the village engineer, um, as well as a rate for $82 an hour for the meeting, a village meeting rate, which is, uh, excellent in their recognition of the time that sometimes, uh, their value at meetings is very valuable, but it's not that they're the whole time. They may have to be there the whole time for their, you know, 10 or 15 minutes of, of input that they would have to have at that. Um, you know, we've, uh, we've had very good luck with Rukert Milkie. They've been, um, they stepped in, um, many years ago when EarthTech, uh, stopped. And, uh, they've been very attentive to what we have as far as our engineering needs. Now, we don't use them exclusively, but, uh, but we do use them for a lot of our day-to-day review information. Um, and I did also say in my memo to personally recognize Jason Letha with Rukert Milkie. Um, he's been serving as our village engineer for some time now. He's very responsive. He provides exceptional service and looks out for the best interest of the village.
Questions?
I have a question regarding the term of agreement.
Yes.
I noticed that the first term expires January 1st, 2018. And then it's subject to renewal for one-year periods of time after that.
It basically renews, it, it renews automatically unless we make any changes to it or they make any changes to it.
Is there a competitive bidding element to any of this, either at, at the outset of the relationship or the contract or at the end?
Yeah, services don't have to be competitively bid, uh, but, uh, what we tend to do on larger projects is we then will go out to proposals for engineering firms, uh, depending on, um, if we feel there's a specific expertise or if we think that it's something that needs to kind of be put out for, um, a competitive task order, uh, proposal. But, um, in general, you know, the, what, what Rukert Milkie does a lot for us is kind of the day-to-day engineering stuff. The plan review, um, some of our, uh, if we have any questions or any kind of specific developer questions that come up, our onsite, uh, resident services for having a inspector on site when water main and sewer main is going into the ground. Um, kind of, uh, a lot of that. And, and some of those are pass-through costs that are paid then by the developer. Okay.
And what I heard you say was that we're not signing a con- an exclusive contract right now. What we're doing is acknowledging the rates that they're putting forward for this next term.
Correct.
And we have the ability to go with any engineering firm that we want at any time.
Correct.
But if we go with Rukert Milkie, these will be the rates and these will be the terms.
Correct.
And if I could just add to that, it, one of the, one of the ways that this works then is you'll see there's a, a task order attached. So for individual projects that the village moves forward with, with Rukert Milkie, then the, uh, task order's completed and, and the master agreement provides kind of the umbrella terms for, uh, governing the work under that project. So, uh, the, the, the master agreement really just makes it kind of easier to, to do projects going forward because you can just use task orders and then rely on that master agreement to fill in a lot of the terms. So at any time, if the village wants to work with a different engineering consultant on something, you can do that. Does that address your question?
Um, mostly.
Okay. What's, what's missing?
Well, I'm wondering if the prices that we receive as a village reflect market rates in some respects.
So, uh, it is possible to do like an RFP to see what kinds of, uh, responses you might get. And, and certainly if the board wanted to do that at some point with respect to any of the services you receive, you know, that's, that's something that you can pursue. I don't know when, when that's been done last.
Well, you know, I will say that we work with, you know, we, I think we're actively working actually with three other firms that I can think of right now. Um, and, uh, obviously with my background, I have a background on understanding kind of rate structures and everything. Um, and, you know, it has, I've always kind of looked at things and, and said, you know, is that unrealistic? Um, and it's, it's, I think, within, um, within rates of what we'd expect. I will say that, um, in services, engineering services, uh, you do get what you pay for. And there are, there are entities out there with extremely low rate schedules. And I would say you get exactly what you pay for out of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Jason, did, did you want to make any comments or anything yet? Welcome. We appreciate you being here.
Yeah, good evening, uh, board members, uh, president and then staff members. I just wanted to thank the village for our ongoing long-term relationship with the village. I personally haven't been involved with the village, uh, but my firm has. Uh, I currently work in the Madison office and I have about 20, 20 years' experience. And, uh, been working, obviously, with the village now for a number of years. And I just wanted to say that, you know, I think it's been a great relationship. I'm also a vice president of the company. I have a little bit higher rate and that's why you see that discount rate that we're proposing, uh, because we realize that it's not practical for me as the vice president. But what you get is, me as the vice president, is you get somebody who's got authority to speak on behalf of the company, make decisions. You also have somebody with a lot of experience. I also serve in the same role, uh, for the city of Columbus. So I, I am the city engineer for them as well. And so again, that comes with that experience and that knowledge that I do something very similar with another community. So again, uh, I, I just want to say thank you, uh, in consideration of the contract tonight. Again, I think Jeff said that we certainly don't expect that we're your sole engineer. We know that there's other firms out there that, that might be of better interest for the, to, for the village. And, and certainly we recognize you need to do what's in your best interest and, and that's perfectly fine. Um, I also want to say that we're gonna obviously continue to strive to be more efficient. We've, we've gone paperless with a lot of things where we're doing our construction review services. And I know we've been working on, on staff to provide it more efficiently. And, uh, just looking at ways to continue to improve our service to the village. So I just wanted to say thank you. And if there's any questions about our agreement, I can try and hopefully answer those.
Other questions?
I don't have any.
Okay. And I would, uh, affirm what Jeff said, too. I was on the board when we had the previous firm and, and that did not work well, uh, since EarthTech, or since, I'm sorry, since Rukert Milkie came on board, things have, have gone very, very well, I think. well, I think. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? So we have the motion second to approve the master professional service agreement between Rooker Milkie and Village of Oregon. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item six is public appearances, there are none. Item seven, approval of minutes, are none before us tonight. Item eight, approval of vouchers, we have vouchers tonight in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, one hundred forty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents for approval.
Move. Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Questions?
I have one.
Go ahead, Jerry.
LWL, and it looks like we replaced a, a pump over at the sewer plant.
We did.
And ten thousand dollars, what does a ten thousand dollar pump do over there?
That ten thousand dollar pump pumps waste-activated sludge.
Okay. So it's sludge.
Sludge.
More detail?
I'm afraid to ask.
I'll bring you a sample next meeting.
No, that's okay.
This is not fine. Jeff will show you.
No, I'm, I'm, my curiosity is satisfied.
You're happy it's being pumped somewhere else, let's just say that.
Yep. And pumps tire service, it looks like we're replacing tires on some of the trucks specifically for trees and brush.
Well, what we do, what we do, this, this was on one of our large dump trucks, and and obviously those are very expensive, and so what we do is we split that, since those vehicles are used across many different departments in public works, we'll split those amongst the different budgets.
Okay, and that's perfectly acceptable.
Yep.
But the, it was the description that, that prompted me to ask another question. I noticed that people during this nice weather now have started hauling down branches out to the curb.
Yes.
When does that pickup start?
Second week in April.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay, thanks, Jerry. Anybody else? Okay, so we have vouchers tonight, in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, one hundred forty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents. Roll call, please.
Staten.
Yes.
Bally.
Yes.
Brenhauer.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Harpeter.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Item nine is community input. Anyone who would like to address the village tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to item ten, proclamations and announcements. Item A, board comments.
I'd just like to point out that on my way down here tonight, and I, I know, I talked to Jeff about this, the work has started on the water tower. I don't know, did it start today, Jeff?
Do you want me to talk about that or at eleven?
Aye.
Aye.
You choose.
Oh, we'll, we'll wrap it up at the end with eleven ayes.
Sounds good.
Yep, they're working on it. They've been working on it for, they worked on it last week, and they'll be continuing to work on it.
Right.
Thank you. Anything else? Item B, staff comments.
So Steve, I, before I talk about the meetings, I just want to mention something that Judy gave to me this afternoon. We got this from Deb from the school district. So I know this isn't on the agenda, but I'm gonna, it's okay with the board, I'm gonna go ahead and work with the school district to submit a grant to the, make sure I get the name right here. It's, it's National Recreation and Parks Association. Basically, we'd be applying, it's not a matching grant, applying for a twenty thousand dollar grant for the splash pad project.
Oh, okay.
So we're gonna submit that with the school district, so, okay.
Looks like that's fine.
Yes, then, are.
Go ahead, anyone want to comment here?
Yeah, April third is, we have a Monday night off next week, so don't, don't come here, stay home.
Don't worry.
I listed some of the meetings, April tenth, I tried to come up with the, the key things that will be happening on those meeting dates. The tenth, we're gonna be hopefully approving the Jefferson Crossing project and, and be looking at the Tiffi boundaries with Vannamall, for example. And then we'll be having the compliance checks, discussions with the two agents headquarters and ACE's main tap. Seventeenth, we're gonna be looking at, we're gonna, we're gonna continue to review the CIP at that meeting and look at the two sidewalk studies that we were gonna actually look at tonight if we would have had public works, so we're, we're gonna do that at a board meeting. And we have the special organization meeting on the eighteenth, and the dumpster license agreement is coming back that night, some of the quarter or two. And, and then continue to review the Pacific Campus Plan as well that night. And I think I have, I think I might still have the coming to that meeting to help us continue to work through the plan. And then we will have a personnel meeting in April, Bonnati Public Works Meeting.
Okay, thank you. So item eleven, communication miscellaneous business. Item A, discussion possible action regarding the two thousand seventeen salary study wage adjustments and the letter from the council on aging regarding case managers' wages.
So this is on the agenda, and this would actually gone to personnel, but we want to start working on this, and I'm assuming the board's desire is for us to do the salary study and then come back with recommendations. We have twenty thousand dollars in the, the budget to do those adjustments this year. Is that right? Okay.
Yep.
Like I said, I think at some point we are gonna have to think about hiring a consultant to help us, for example, get our salary schedule in line, but I think at this point we, we should be focusing on making wage adjustments, so we'll, we'll do that.
Okay. And you want a motion to approve?
If you would, please.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, discussion of department heads preparing a ten-year staffing plan for the board's review.
So I asked the department heads, they're working on this, and we are gonna present this during the two thousand eighteen budget process, and we're gonna start looking at that. It just kind of fits in well when we're talking about the new buildings and everything upcoming.
Yeah, the village has grown, and we haven't added a lot of staff, very little, actually, I believe, so.
Obviously, it's a bit budget impacts on.
Yeah. Item C, discussion possible action about installing rectangular rapid flashing beacons at Janesville Street Perry Parkway intersection. Recommended motion to approve the procurement and installing of a set of rectangular rapid flashing beacons for the Janesville Street South Perry Parkway intersection, funding for the ten thousand dollar estimated cost we have from two thousand seventeen borrowing and half from Dane County Highway District per attached email dated three thirteen seventeen.
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, just a little discussion on this. I was contacted early in two thousand seventeen from an individual at Karate America that was wanting to just bring to our attention kind of what she felt was a dangerous situation at the intersection of South Perry Parkway and Janesville. With Karate America, they have a lot of kids that are coming across the street there, and she said that she's, she's noticed numerous close calls and some poor compliance with resident, or drivers stopping for the pedestrians. And then on January nineteenth, there was an incident where a student was hit by a vehicle. It was, it was raining, it was dark, and, but that, that student was hit. It was luckily, I think the student was, was not seriously injured, but definitely shook up. And at her request, she said, you know, would like us to look into the safety of that intersection and everything. You know, it's likely that that intersection's going to change in the upcoming years, especially as Perry Parkway is pushed through. We'll, we'll probably actually be seeing eventual need maybe for signalization at that intersection, but that doesn't help the immediate issue. So in two thousand fifteen, we had Strand Associates do a study of four intersections in the village or four locations in the village that were, actually five locations in the village as options for these rectangular rapid flashing beacons. And you've seen them now, two of them were installed, one out at Alpine Parkway and Jefferson Street, the other one out on South Perry Parkway at the middle school. And basically, they have, they're remote, they, they don't, they're solar-powered, the pedestrian activates the button, and then that activates the flashing beacons, which I've actually tested these quite a bit, both out on bike rides and walks and that type of thing. I think we've all kind of seen some, and what is predicted in the data out there is that it's some good, at least brings, makes people aware, as long as we don't have too many of them. If you have too many of them, people just start to ignore them, just like other signs and everything. We were actually able to install those last year. We did one of those with a shared cost with the school district, and we actually were able to use our own staff to do the installation of the bases and the concrete, as well as the assembly and installation and startup of them. So we were only having to pay for some minor material and labor costs and then the actual procurement costs of these. I'm recommending that we purchasing, purchase one for the South Perry intersection, and this was part of the study that was done. It was an approved location from the, from the consultant. In my kind of planning for this, I, I decided I'd run up the flagpole and see what Dane County would, would say about sharing in the cost of this, with the idea that when there was a jurisdictional transfer, that, you know, we would be reimbursing them for their investment, that they were willing to go half of the investment on that. I thought that was a nice, good faith effort on Dane County for safety on there. We've had a very good working relationship with them, and we don't know the, you know, we think that the transfer of jurisdiction will be about twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty on, on Janesville Street, but, and that'll also depend on the funding that we have. But I think this is a good intermediate fix for that. You know, I, ideally, the best thing would be something where actually halting the traffic with a stoplight, but that's just not, not at this time.
What's the lifespan of, of one of these rectangular flashing beacon signs?
Oh, it's well over ten years. You know, we, we can, you can replace, you know, parts on them and stuff like that. The poles obviously will last for much, much longer. Batteries, you have to, we estimate those will be probably every other year when we're swapping out the batteries on those, but it's kind of standard maintenance costs.
And we could remove and redeploy that to a different part of the village, right?
Exactly.
If we decided to go with lights there.
And that's kind of why we wanted to say, you know, you know, if we move them to a different location, that we, you know, would then be reimbursing Dane County, because then Dane County would be saying, you know, it's kind of a shared purchase at this time.
Just to be clear, is it crossing only Perry? It's not crossing Janesville?
It's crossing Janesville.
Oh, it's gonna cross Janesville?
Just crossing Janesville.
I see, okay.
Yeah, because see, both, both Perry Parkway approaches are stop-controlled right now.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And so that's, that's the, you know, the feeling that the, the, the main, the, the main difficulty, quite honestly, in, in our culture is getting people just to stop, and it's frustrating.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions?
It gets a lot, too, isn't it?
Well, if I could add, you know, the unique contributing factor to that particular area, too, is that the inbound traffic has those two lanes that come into one. So a lot of times you'll see two drivers trying to beat each other, they're more distracted with that, or it's just, they just beat a stoplight, so, you know, let's get going. It just distracts the driver even more. If you have that nice blinking light, it might just be enough to catch their attention.
So on this topic, Jeff, the, the light downtown by QuickTrip is an older light and not, I don't think nearly as effective as the newer ones?
Correct.
I've seen people drive right through that when it's flashing, and maybe we could take a look at, leave that pole, but replace that with a more up.
Sure.
And that's a real busy area, and I've seen kids push that and cars just drive right through.
Sure. The, you know, that's, that's, it's a good, good thought, and I agree with you. I've, I've actually been out there and I push it going over to QuickTrip or something, and I'm surprised at how few people stop. And I just don't think it, it doesn't grab your eye. The, the flashing beacons are, are very intense, amber-colored, and they, you can't miss them when they, when they go off.
Yeah.
You're right, I think that's kind of an earlier.
Yeah, the lights down there are really small.
Yep.
And they are harder to see, so.
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Anything else? So we have the motion second to approve installing the rectangular rapid flashing beacons at Janesville Street and South Perry Parkway. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Item D, discussion possible action about West Side Water System Supply Study. Recommended motion is approve the task order prepared by Rooker Milkie for the West Side Water System Supply Study. In the amount of thirty-one thousand dollars, water impact fees will pay for twenty-four thousand dollars of the study.
So move. Second.
Thank you.
Now that we have a general services agreement, we can do a task order. Actually, this is something we've been, we've actually been holding on to for a little bit, pending, just to make sure that things were gonna move forward with forward development. Forward development, obviously, is at seventy-two, seventy, seventy-two acres west of Oregon Parks, which also includes our well number six area over there. As we extend in there, you know, we did do a water, Rooker Milkie did do a water system mast, master plan for us just about two years ago. However, that's kind of what I call the, the higher level view of the water system. It's not, it's not a, an in-depth review of exactly what we're going to need in a specific area. And that's what this is, you know, we're looking at the forward development property. We actually have to create a new high zone. We actually, right now, have one high zone and one low zone. We're actually in the low zone here around the village. The high zones are up in the upper areas of Bergamot or South Main and that area. And what that is, that's just a different pressure zone. Well, when we go on the forward development property and you start to climb up that hill towards a Hermsen property, is when we start to dip below what the minimum pressure is that we are, have to serve residents at. So we have to actually have to create a new high zone in that area. So we need, we need the study to be able to look at the location of that high zone, costs associated with that, improvements necessary to our system. It also looks at our storage demands in that area and our storage needs, and will help us as we move forward to development of the well and the pump station over there.
Thank you. Are there questions for Jeff or comments?
Will this lead to another above-ground tank?
We're not predicting another above-ground storage tank there. What it might lead to is a below, is an at-grade or below-ground storage reservoir with a pump system that will pressurize a high, a new high zone is what we anticipate.
Anything else? So we have motion and second to approve the task order prepared by Rooker Milkie for the West Side Water System Supply Study, in the amount of thirty-one thousand dollars. Twenty-four thousand of that is covered by water impact fees. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item E, discussion possible action regarding Fly Dane two thousand seventeen contracts. It's recommended motion to approve that contract with Dane County and authorize a payment of one thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars and ninety-five cents when invoiced.
So move.
Second, thank you.
We talked about this a few months ago, or a month or so ago, about the Fly Dane, and this is just now the, we have the final amount now that they've figured out all their partners, and for the fifteen hundred dollars. The one thing I want to bring to your attention is, as this year's, Dane County's actually done a, a buy-up, I guess, if you will, and part of that would be that it's actually gonna give all the communities within Dane County a one-foot contour, which is a, actually is a benefit to developers that we have coming into town, when we can share our GIS data with them. But it's, for, for the amount of what we're purchasing, not only getting the high, high-definition aerial imagery, it's actually six-inch accuracy, or six-inch, what's the right word? Resolution. So, I mean, it's, it's very high resolution. Don't sunbathe in the backyard. I won't be.
Good.
But, but it does, it does, it's a, it's a good value for us as a village, and we use it, we use the, the images all the time.
Any questions? So we have the motion second to approve the Fly Dane contract with Dane County in the amount of one thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars ninety-five cents. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item F, discussion possible action regarding seasonal water and sewer person, limited-term employee, and seasonal parks and grounds person, limited-term employee job descriptions. Recommended motion is to approve those job descriptions.
So move. Second.
Thank you. Any questions here? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, February port on connection and impact fees and building permit fees. Thomas Stafford, questions from trustees? Item H, e-notify is now available on the village's webpage. This service allows residents to be notified electronically when new information such as meeting materials posted to the village's website, and that's where we get our stuff now, too, right? Questions, comments on this? Item I, for Mr. Bally, status of painting in downtown water.
You finally got through, Jerry.
Thank you.
Just could not wait.
I've been dying, I've been wondering about that.
Well, yeah, and this is an exciting time, actually, and it's been fun to see, guys were up actually on the tower this last week from Lane Tank Company, excuse me, and working at securing the rolling ladder that's going around the tank. It was not safe for someone to climb up there, so they were, they were taking care of that. They took care of all their welding and stuff that they were going to do last week, including kind of reinforcing the new, the hatch at the bottom. And then this next, this today and probably for the next two or three days, they're gonna be up there making repairs to the frost box as well as pressure washing and, and doing the prep for the, to kind of remove the loose materials. They're collecting that material and then that will provide us with the tank being ready for when that painting window comes along. And they think once they're ready to paint, there'll be probably three to five days of painting.
Okay. Yeah, it will be nice to have that done.
It's very nice to have it done. We're also working with the metal work person, what's the right term, metal, metallurgist? I don't know. Metal-y guy to, to work on the weather vane for the, the top. And I think it's exciting to start to see everything kind of come together and just see workers up there.
Yeah.
It's gonna look very nice. And then following, actually following the painting then, Suro Electric will be coming in to install the, the lighting package that goes on the tower. And then eventually, we're, we're predicting or we're, we would like to have some sort of event out there.
Randy's already preparing for that.
Yeah. Stealth bomber fly right over. You won't even see it. It's really, really cool.
Any questions?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment that, that water tower is another great example of the public-private partnership that's been happening in the village and more, and more increasingly so. I was gonna say more so, but increasingly so. And I want to thank Randy Glish for spearheading that whole pump house, water tower project, but then also thank everybody in the village that stepped forward with their contributions, whatever the size, because truly this is our village and, and if it isn't for us stepping forward and doing what we can, these kinds of projects just can't be done.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. And that same thing applies to the food pantry. And I think both those things, I mean, I've thought this a number of times, it's a spirit of community that, that exists here and how I wish that the elected faces at the state and federal level start to look at things the same way instead of trying to break things down, so. But congratulations to Oregon for what they do and the leadership they have for people in doing that.
And just a quick question about the water tower.
Yes.
This might seem like a silly question, but I don't know that it's been discussed. I assume it's gonna be silver again.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'm hoping that Mr. Livey goes up toward the top to get a picture.
That's the plan, Steve.
Good.
Oh, that's why he's here.
That's why he's here.
Yeah, he's gonna make an appointment with Jeff to go up there. Thanks, Bill. Appreciate that. No, no drones allowed.
No, we'll get you a harness.
Item twelve, reported committees, there are none tonight. Same as men's requiring action on item thirteen. Item fourteen, unfinished business, there is none. Same with new business. There's a list of future agenda items and goes down to item seventeen. A motion for adjournment, please.
Some move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.